Paul, a meeting to order at 6:10. Can we please rise for a pledge of allegiance? Mayor Rookel? Here.
Michelle Kedder's ready. Mike Hensker?
Here.
Andy Kinsley? Here. Aaron Novak?
Here.
Sue Stelter? Here. Dr. R.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Exit, sir. For, uh, it's been behind us. We're in the exits. Uh, 2.1, review and approval of board agenda. Now I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented and or amended. Motion, please. Mike, second. Add any discussion on the agenda tonight? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Minutes for October 18th. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 18th business meeting as presented at this meeting, please. I have a motion. Mike, second count. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Minutes for October 28th. I have a motion to approve the minutes for our October 28th special business meeting as presented at this meeting, please. Motion, Aaron. Second, Mike. Any discussion on October 28th minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Minutes for November 4th. I have a motion to approve the minutes for November 4th special business meeting as presented at this meeting. Motion, please. Aaron, second, Patty. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Presentation, everybody, please.
Good evening. Uh, so since the last monthly meeting, just a few things that have happened in between then and now. We did have a calendar change for our district. We moved the two November conference days to January, and we moved the February parent conferences to March. The parent conferences will now be held in person, and we wanted to move those to after the holidays so that any exposures wouldn't affect people's holiday plans. Along with that, we created in-person event thresholds of 7.5%. If on the New York Forward County dashboard, the county reaches 7.5% positivity rate of COVID, we will move to virtual events. I'll share the numbers now, but we're currently in the 4% range, and as such, we are planning our middle school fall drama this coming weekend. I'm sure Mr. Kamer is going to talk a little bit more about it in a minute. But it is going to be in-person. Each cast member is going to receive two tickets per show, and additionally, a recording will be released for additional family members to watch. In terms of winter concerts, we had hoped to do full in-person concerts, but it's proving very difficult to plan with the six-foot restrictions. So when students sing or use an instrument, they have to be six feet apart from each other. Right then and there, that takes up pretty much this entire space, and then the parents and guests would have to, each set of guests would have to be six feet apart. It becomes very cumbersome very quickly and, literally impossible to have everybody inside. But we're trying to still come up with some creative ideas. I threw some ideas out today to some local contacts, as well as contacts here in the school, and so we're hoping to still come up with some creative ideas so parents can see their children perform live in some capacity this winter. If not, we will make sure that it certainly happens in spring with an outdoor concert. So stay tuned for, but we are, like I said, we are hoping to do something, even if it's small, this winter. We also had Halloween and Veterans Day. Halloween, our staff did not disappoint as usual. They had their themes, and we had Batty Teachers, and Alice in Wonderland, and Minions, and our villains in the 4th and 5th grade hallway. So it was a lot of fun as always, and the staff really just does a great job every year. I'm sure Mrs. Connolly is wanting to talk about Veterans Day, so I'll let her go into details about that. Yes? Yes. But I just wanted to share a couple of pictures from that day. The student artwork was decorated all around the American Legion walls. You can see it in the background here. Here we have some of the participants that attended. They had a breakfast bag, letters from the students, et cetera. And then Mrs. Connolly put together a, with her staff, put together a wonderful video for the veterans. I'll let her go into further detail about that shortly. Just in terms of a COVID update on number of district cases. We currently have one case in district. That's 0.16% of our population. Historically, we've had nine total case, I'm sorry, 19 total cases this year. That's a misprint. And that's 3.15% of our total population. The CDC COVID online information for Orange County rates us at high at 5.27%. The New York Department of Health positivity rate yesterday was 4.7, and the same, that seven-day average was 4.4. And that's about the same as last month, give or take a tenth of a point or two. And just as a reminder, the CDC is different from the New York DOH because the New York DOH incorporates rapid tests, whereas the CDC only counts PCR tests. Uh, the, this information has been requested by local media via FOIL of all school districts, so there will likely be a article in the paper or on the news within the next couple of weeks regarding vaccination rates. And anytime we give out information to the media, I'd like to make sure that our public in our community knows it first. So our vaccination rate of our staff overall is at 78%. I'm not sure how they're going to want it divided. So I just divided it with teachers, certified related service providers, administrators. There is an 89% vaccination rate, and on all of the staff, there is a 67% vaccination rate. So if you, if there is an article in the paper, those numbers might fluctuate slightly, but that depends on who they want in the various categories. On tonight's agenda, we have some retirements. Uh, we are going to celebrate them fully in the spring. My plan is on the night that we do tenure to also celebrate retirements and really take the time to honor our teachers that have given so many years, and our SRPs as well that were announced last month. So we'll celebrate them fully in the spring, and then we'll have the retirement celebration. But I did want to probably acknowledge who will be on the agenda tonight. Uh, so we have Ms. Regina Cogliano, who is an elementary education teacher, and she is currently placed in the elementary school library. We have Ms. Jacqueline Kessler, an elementary education teacher, currently placed in the 4th grade. Ms. Jacqueline Manucci, an elementary education teacher, who is currently teaching Response to Intervention. Mr. Vicner Pignatero, our elementary education teacher, who teaches Project Lead the Way. And Mr. Keith Saltz, elementary education teacher, and he's currently placed in 5th grade. Each of these is going to be a tremendous loss to the district. They have given years, and they were, I think in each of these cases, their entire career at Greenwood Lake, or almost their entire career at Greenwood Lake. Their presence is definitely going to be missed next year, but we do wish them the best in retirement, and we can't wait to truly celebrate them and speak about each of them individually in the spring. At this time, I just kind of want to open it up for presentation topic requests. We do have budget season fast approaching, so that will be much of our time in board meetings and board workshops. But I also wanted to take this opportunity to ask if there were other topics for which the board would like presentations. For example, last, I think it was last month, we did the presentation on how we support our higher learners, and that was at the board's request to do that presentation. I didn't know if there was anything else similar to that, or other topics that you wanted us to explore, present to you, and to the community. Okay. All right. So we'll just continue on our monthly presentations, and if some topic comes up, we will, um, add that in. But again, budget season is coming, and that will take up lots of my time. All right, principal reports. Mrs. Connolly from the elementary school.
Good evening. Uh, as Superintendent Hadden alluded to, last week at the elementary school, we hosted a virtual Veterans Day event to show our gratitude to all who have served in the nation's military. The staff and students did an outstanding, a truly outstanding job, expressing pride and respect for our vets in a video tribute that has been posted to our Greenwood Lake YouTube channel. It's also been down on the elementary page of the district website. If you haven't had the opportunity to view it yet, I highly recommend you do so because it will certainly make your heart happy. Nothing, nothing better than showing, showing our appreciation to those veterans and our, uh, our American Legion, and they did a superb job. Special thanks to our little scout leaders, Commander Barrow, and General Legion Hall, and the specials, and grade three teachers especially, for all of the very hard work that they put in on making this event so successful. I received a few emails from thankful veterans, and I would like to just highlight a few ones for you to see. First one's, "I'd just like to say wow, what a nice job you, your staff, and all the kids did." For an old guy like me, it was very moving to see kids so little art flying and singing patriotic songs. Second one said, "You are certainly very special for caring so much about us veterans and making sure that young kids learn about us and the freedoms we have. Thanks to people like you, we're all feeling the love, today, tomorrow, and always." And lastly, "How cute and precious was that? I'm impressed by the teachers in school that they would spend so much time and effort to celebrate Veterans Day. Thank you for sending." And this video link will be emailed to all members of the American Legion post so it can be enjoyed by all, even if they no longer reside in Greenwood Lake or are away from the area at this time. So a tremendous salute to staff and students in the United States. In other news, November's been a big month for professional development. Superintendent Conklin's study provided targeted PDs at grade level and specialist teachers, teaching assistants, and service providers. And today, all those who teach math, who have a grade 10 being a zoo, to learn more about teaching strategies and online tools to enhance the understanding of learning skills and key concepts. Grade 10 math website has been purchased by the district and is utilized by all grade levels at the elementary school, providing time for the teachers to meet with grade 10 senior, gain a deeper understanding of all resources available to support their instruction. It was very, very helpful and very well received by all in attendance today. And lastly, as we prepare for Thanksgiving holiday, uh, next week, the specialist teachers are organizing a school-wide youth pantry to support all of our community. And we hope that all are able to take time to be thankful for all the goodness in our lives and extend that all to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kamer?
Um, Diane, I, I actually went to the Veterans Day service on Saturday, and like Sarah and Emily said, you guys did a great job, everybody involved. See all the stuff on the walls, and the community turnout was great, and everybody just loved everything that they learned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's my team, just thank you so much.
Good evening. I'll start off our presentation here. Tomorrow is National SRP Day. Um, and I know that our, our United Citizens in Kinnarney here has something special to celebrate, all of our SRPs, and I would like to comment that, um, whatever the position is within our SRPs, we know that they secretly run the world. Um, so it will take tomorrow to acknowledge them and all the great work that they do here in schools. An update on our high school choice process. We were really busy in October with our parent meetings, with our student visits to both Oregon Valley and Chester Academy. We thank both schools for really doing a great job for our students and our parents in our student tours and the parent events. Um, and a shout-out to Principal Flanagan at Chester and Principal Fusco at Warwick, um, as well as Mrs. Sieg here, really putting, from our guidance office, a tremendous amount of work, organizing all of the details, making sure information was readily available and setting up all of those informational meetings. So just a reminder to our E3 families that December 15th is our deadline to be able to, um, commit to making their high school choice. Mrs. Haddon mentioned the Halloween celebrations, and I wanted to give a shout-out to Mrs. Chapman and our student council. We had 163 students here on Friday night, just before Halloween, with an outdoor dance. We are really making great efforts throughout the district to provide normal events and opportunities that would be good for our kids. Really difficult with COVID protocols to host a middle school dance. Um, but they did a tremendous job, outside, lights, food for the kids, music, and the kids just really, really had a blast. So I think the outdoor dance model would be something that sticks as a positive from this as we, as we move forward. Also, for Veterans Day, currently, the student council is collecting donations, monetary donations and items for veterans currently, or active-duty service members currently serving overseas, as well as for veterans that live throughout Orange County. We're collecting those donations through the 24th. And this week, a big week here at the school. Mr. Pignatero is here quietly behind the, the camera over there. But a shout-out to Mr. Pignatero, Mr. Compton, working with all of our students that are working so hard for the last several months to get ready for our production this week. And Mr. Vennelli and his kids with the set design, you see some of the props over there. It's going to be a great event here for the school. It's Friday night at 7:00 and Saturday at 2:00. And I just wanted to explain to our, our community, as we plan with the COVID protocols, with the space that we have, we had to make the tough decision to limit the ticket amount for each student participating. Um, so each student, each performance gets two tickets. Um, and what that will allow for us to do is keep the six feet, have an in-person event, and let families come here and see our students perform. Um, as Superintendent Haddon mentioned earlier, we do have a link at some point over the weekend, once we get that situated and recorded from our rehearsals, that we'll post. But I just wanted to give a, a little bit of explanation to that. Um, and with the, with the ticket limitation, there was no way to equitably parse out the space that we have and decide who can have an extra ticket here or there. Um, so we did have to cap that at two per night. We are going to rotate the halves of the cafeteria so that each night, alphabetically, families have an opportunity to sit a bit closer to the stage to really take in the performance. But we do wish all of those involved, Mr. Pignatero, thanks for all your work with that, and good luck to our staff and students this weekend. Uh, we're looking forward to our Thanksgiving recess coming up. And just a quick update on athletics. We did wrap up our fall athletic season. Tremendous turnout and, and play from our student athletes. It was a successful season, and our winter sports begin on Monday this coming week on the 22nd. And that's all I've got for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, at this time, I'm going to call up Ann Monroe, who's going to assist me in discussing the comptroller's audit and the recommendations and our responses. Um, so the Board of Education knows, but our community may not know, that every five years or so, districts get audited by the State Controllers Office, and they come in and they look through all of our different books and budgets and how we spend things, et cetera. And then they choose a focus area and kind of dive, take a deeper dive in, and then give us recommendations for ways that we can improve. So they were in district from June until August. They were here approximately three months, nearly every day. That's a lot. Uh, and then we had a summary of findings meeting on August 12th, where they kind of summarized what they believed they were going to be putting into the report. Then we had an exit interview with a first draft of findings, recommendations, and best practices. We had that meeting on the 28th. Um, and during that conversation, they, we had been given a draft copy of the report, and we had noted to them, and they agreed with us that there are several of the recommendations are based on subjective standards and their preferences as opposed to actually based on statutory guidelines, state law, or actual board policy. Regardless, those, all of the recommendations have been addressed within the corrective action plan. We did accept the draft revisions after that exit conference. They did agree to change some of the things in their initial draft, but they didn't, they didn't send us a newly integrated, edits-integrated copy. But they sent us those revisions on November 5th. And then we created a draft response last week and shared that with the board. And Ann is here this evening and is going to share that response with the board. And then it's up tonight for your review. And then we, you have the full letter in front of you, but again, we'll go over it in detail in just a minute. Um, to, we have to send it to the Office of State Controller by November 22nd. They have to have it. So with that, I turn it over to Ann, who is going to share a little bit with you about the audit recommendations and our proposed responses.
So thank you so much for permitting me to review the audit recommendations with you this evening. With reference to recommendation one and six, they direct us to develop the view and update the written procurement policies to ensure they include detailed guidance for procuring professional services, foods and services below the competitive threshold, the competitive bidding thresholds. They also invest practice recommendations, those subjective ones, on seven and eight. Suggested we ensure all employees involved in the purchasing process have copies of the purchasing policy and procedures and not using them. So we have, as an action plan, developed written purchasing procedures and set requirements, the documentation of the actions to be taken by adopting last month the policy exhibit purchasing ranges and requirements. You see that on the right of the screen. And this information was shared with all employees involved in the first processing of purchase orders. And additionally, I will periodically monitor the progress to ensure purchases are made in compliance with the established procedures and policy. Recommendation two is to RFP for professional auditing services every five years, and we, we will be doing that.
Can I swear, can you talk just a little bit about what an RFP is?
That's a request for, for proposal for professional services. And with reference to our independent annual audit, that controller wants us to, and SED wants us to RFP, request for proposals for that every five years, at least every five years. So we did that back in September, I think, for five years, and that's renewable every year, up to five years. With reference to best practice four, recommends that we give the claims auditor access to accounting records to verify the availability of funds. We have always had funds in the lines that we're making purchases out of. But to that end, the district treasurer will provide the claims auditor with a current appropriation status report, which would show any negatives, and the board receives that report every month. Additionally, the auditor is recommended that the claims auditor has the terms and hourly rates of all current purchasing or service contracts. To facilitate this, the purchasing agent has developed and will provide the claims auditor with a summary sheet of all of the contracts and hourly rates, and that's also reflected there as an example along the right. With reference to best practice, recommendation number five, the auditor's found two overpayments to vendors. The district's currently reaching out to those vendors to recover those overpayments. Recommendations three and nine are to provide the claims auditor with procedures and checklists to ensure proper implementation of the established procedures. As a result, we've supplied the claims auditor with the updated Local Government Management Guide issued by the Controllers Office last month. And we've created a claims auditor checklist that is also being used by the accounts payable clerk, the treasurer, and the claims auditor with processing payments. The checklist was approved and added as an exhibit to the policy manual last month. Are there any questions? I know it's a lot. Out of the nine recommendations, five were those effective best practices that Mrs. Haddon spoke about. But as she said, we've incorporated a more action plan.
Thank you very much.
Anything about in the end of the report? Did the board have any questions or feedback from this evening? Or would need to respond to a follow-up on? Thank you very much.
Before we get into individual reports, I also want to thank our SRPs for everything they do in this school district. And as a board, we thank you very much. Thank you for that. And we're going to go to board member reports. District liaison reports. Sue, can you, Chester, please?
Sure. Our students, eighth-grade students, went over to Chester, and so did the parents. There was a day and evening, um, meetings, and Mr. Flanagan was quite happy with the turnout this year. He was happy with his nighttime turnout. Um, boys wore a city soccer and the football team, both made it to sections. They played their hearts out. That was a big deal for them. And then that's about it. They had their homecoming dance outside when it was like 36 degrees, and the kids loved it. And that's it for Chester.
Thank you very much. Uh, Patty, Warwick, please.
Um, hi, everyone. Just a few things. Any Greenwood Lake parents who have students in Warren Valley High School, just a reminder that November 17th and 22nd are conferences. They're coming up. Um, just a couple of the guidance rules. No more than two parents can be permitted to the conferences. They are all in-person. Um, masks must be worn, and respectfully, no siblings permitted. There was a link sent out via email. So parents, please click on the link that was provided and set up your parent-teacher conferences coming up again November 17th and 22nd for any of the Warren Valley High School students. Um, one more thing, there's a new website. It's, um, I believe it's called the Perro Administrator. It is for anyone, any student athlete that is wishing to try out for any sports, whether it be winter, spring, fall. Um, it is the new website that all parents must use. Um, a link was provided. Click on the link. Um, a password is also provided. Set up your child's account, and in there, that's the only place that you're going to be able to permit to upload medical forms, any health forms, humanization records, so on, like that if your child would like to try out for a sport. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Miss Liaison, Sue, please.
Okay. Um, last month was the annual meeting, and the resolutions and amendments were voted on. The most notable one that, um, was advocated for across all the districts was for the controller to have a standardized audit and not what they have been currently doing. It's not just us that was audited this year, it's many districts. And they are going to advocate at the state level to, um, eliminate the, uh, opinions and leave it to just laws and what's needed, meet with different representatives. That's about it.
Thank you very much. Uh, you can do Axpa.
Axpa. Uh, last month, the county's presentation was on social media. It was presented by, um, one of the attorney, school attorney firms. Um, and it was in very much, a lot of detail about freedom of speech and social media and how to handle, um, for not just the board, but for the district. So it was very interesting. And this month is something new. I don't, I don't. I didn't really read the email yet today, but the meeting is December 1st. Anybody that wants to jump on, there's a link for it.
I think the email is about CRT and that. Thank you very much. Facilities. John, I'm going to go to you for that.
I'm not sure exactly what I can say or what we discussed at the last facilities meeting. We did meet at the elementary school to review some projects, future projects, that we're going to look into for full board approval once we get some estimates on how much that is going to actually cost. We did approve, there are some additional ash trees behind the softball field at the middle school that do need to come down for safety, so those are going to be taken down. And then we are, we did receive the, I believe, another update for the cafeteria at the elementary school that will be reviewed at the next facilities meeting and will be forward with that. I'm not sure if anybody else wants to add anything.
Thank you very much. Boardit Committee, who wants to do that one? All right. Boardit, that's not that. Budget? And Policy Committee, Michelle? Right, I want to write.
Yeah, we finished the six thousands and the seven thousand. We'll be doing the eight thousand soon. Hopefully, we'll plug away at those and get this policy manual done. So that's pretty much, that's about it.
Thank you very much. PTSA liaison report. Somebody hear from PTSA? Village of Riverdale Lake liaison report. My sister sent that to me. And she said, this is. Holiday festival and tree lighting is December 4th, starting at 12:00 p.m. No overnight parking on village streets during the winter season now until people. Riverdale Chamber of Commerce mixer is December 7th at Emerald Point, starting at 7:00 p.m. $10 a head for each non-member to attend. And that's all she has for now. Anybody else? BOSI's. Do you have any for BOSI's?
No, Bill's been quiet. He's just gearing up for their facilities discussions.
For anybody that doesn't know about the facilities discussion policies, is they're going through older buildings and seeing what's wrong. And they've had this for a long time that they've never really addressed that much, but they're going to start doing that. And all districts have to pay for that. So whatever number they come up with, everybody's going to get a piece of it. So we've got feedbacks if we want to be, like, on their committees to go look at, you know, work the facilities and up and down and we put it to refresh that, so we'll see what happens. And that's all we have for that.
Does anybody know, is BOSI subject to the five-year inspections like we are? Ann, do you know?
I think we don't know. We don't know if they're subject to one.
They have different rules than we do.
They do have different rules than we do. I think they do do a report every five or so years. They don't have to do any different, like, we have the requirements with it.
Correspondence to board. Any correspondence to board? Public statements and petitions. Will we start that? I'm going to read that again. Public expression at meetings shall be encouraged, and the following guidelines are intended to promote important procedure for public comment and participation. The public will be given the opportunity to address the board regarding items of interest and concern during the pilgrimage of the floor section at each monthly regular board meeting. Anyone wishing to be heard must sign in the public comment form prior to the start of the business meeting or before speaking. Speakers will be asked to state their name before addressing their question or statement to the board. Speakers may be limited to three minutes each. In their comments or questions, speakers are to have the right to speak without interruption and are to address the president of the board. Comments regarding specific personnel would be ruled out of order and referred to the superintendent. Speakers will be recognized for a second time until all who wish to speak have been given an opportunity. The board may suspend pilgrimage of the floor if it is determined that a continued discussion on a particular topic will prevent the board from completing its scheduled business or one of the above guidelines or not be here to and continue to be participative and deemed to be destructive. Now, we're going to open up the still bits of the floor. Who wants to go first? Anyone? Nobody? 7.1, financial reports and warrants. Can I have a motion to approve the October 2021 financial reports and warrants as presented, please? Motion, please. Mike, second. Sue, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Approved Correction Action Plan Report of Examination. Can I get a motion to approve the Riverdale University School District's corrective action plan as presented, please? Motion. Michelle, second. Sue, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Amend 2021 and 2022 BOE business meeting calendar. The motion to amend and re-adapt the 2021-2022 business meeting calendar as presented, can I get a motion, please? Aaron, second. John, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 7.4, adopt 2022-2023 budget preparation calendar. Can I get a motion to adopt the 2022-2023 budget preparation calendar as presented, please? Sue, second. Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Approved Consultant Agreement with Sweeney. Can I get a motion to approve the consultant agreement between the district and R. Terry McSweeney as presented, please? Motion, please. Mike, second. Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 7.6, approved addition to district's tax shelter annuity list, security benefit corporation. Can I get a motion to approve the addition of security benefit corporation to the district's tax shelter annuity provider list as presented, please? Can I get a motion? Mike, second. John, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 7.7, approved final payment MH Heating and Cooling LLC. Can I get a motion to approve the final payment to MH Heating and Cooling LLC as presented, please? Motion. Aaron, second. Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries 7-0. 7.5, execute health services agreement, maximum healthcare staffing. A motion to execute a health service agreement with maximum healthcare staffing as presented, please? Motion, please. Mike, second. Sue, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 7.9, authorize superintendent to enter an agreement, Auctions International Inc. Can I get a motion to authorize a superintendent of schools to enter into agreement with Auctions International Inc., please? Motion, please. John, second. Sue, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 8.1, this is always a tough one for us. Accept resignations of Cagliano, Kessler, Manucci, Pignatero, and Saltz. Can I get a motion to accept with regret the resignations for the purpose of retirement of the following teachers? Can I get a motion, please, with regret? Mike, Sue, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 8.2, approved leave of absence for Everell. Can I get a motion to approve the leave of absence for Caitlin Avril as presented, please? Motion, please. Mike, second. John, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Approved leave of absence extension for Hyatt. Can I get a motion to approve the leave of absence extension for Samantha Hyatt as presented, please? Motion, please. Aaron, second. Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Extend leave replacement appointment Swindle. Can I get a motion to extend the leave replacement teacher appointment of Robert Swindle as presented, please? Motion. Sue, second. John, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 8.5, approved FMLA pay leave of absence employee 1335. Can I get a motion to approve that FMLA pay leave of absence for employee 1335 as presented, please? Motion, please. Sue, second. Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 8.6, appoint part-time lunch recess aide to wire. Can I get a motion to appoint Colleen DeWire as part-time recess aide as presented, please? Motion. John, second. Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Points, teacher substitute Ryan. Can I get a motion to approve? Was it Kara? Kara? Kara Ryan as certified teacher substitute as presented. Can I get a motion, please? Mike, second. Sue, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Appoint leave replacement teacher Rob. Can I get a motion to appoint Kara Ryan as leave replacement teacher as presented, please? Motion, please. Who did this? All right. Oh, sorry. Oh, this is the second, yeah. All right. Sue, can I get a second? Mike, any discussion?
So there are two agenda matters. One is appoint her as a daily substitute. The other one is appoint her in an absentee replacement for head position. So why should I have a day replacement if I'm just still getting the substitute?
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Appoint substitute bus driver Flynn. Can I get a motion to appoint Kevin Flynn as substitute bus driver as presented, please? Motion, please. Mike, second. John, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Approved substitute lunch and recess aide. Mazy? Mazy. Can I get a motion to approve Heather Mazy as a substitute lunch and recess aide as presented, please? Motion, please. Anna, second. Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Appoint substitute bus monitor Concepcion Dele Torre. A motion to appoint Nina Concepcion Dele Torre as substitute bus monitor as presented, please? Motion. John, second. Patty, any discussion? Opposed? I mean, all in favor, sorry. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. I don't know if I got that anyway. I apologize. It was pretty good. Committee on Preschool, Special Education Committee on Special Education. A motion to accept the CPSE and the CSE recommendation as presented, please? Motion. Sue, second. Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right, so any old business? Proposed executive session. The purpose of executive session is obtaining advice on renewed or renegotiated arrangements of a certain tuition contracts. Can I get a motion to return to executive session, please? Aaron, Sue, any discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We are now going to executive session. Thank you. We will not return to public session after executive session. Thank you.